All right, it is 6:30. It is Tuesday, December 19th, 2023, and you are at a common council of the City of Wausau. Welcome, everyone. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next up, the clerk will take roll call.
We have 11 voting members present.
All right, thank you. Next up is public comment, pre-registered citizens for matters appearing on the agenda. Another public comment? Do we have any? We don't have any. So there is an opportunity at the end of the meeting if...
Could you?
Okay. All right. Next up, we have a presentation. This is a presentation and update on the site investigation at 1300 Cleveland Avenue. So we welcome the presentation. Yeah, thank you. Maybe you could just introduce yourself for the public and all of us, too.
I'm Mike Dubrasky with GEI Consultants. I'm a project manager.
I'm Roger Miller with GEI Consultants in Green Bay, a professional geologist licensed in Wisconsin.
Thank you. We'll just let you get started. Maybe afterwards, our body will have some questions, I think, but for now.
Yeah, I was told that I should try and keep this to 15 minutes or so. So yeah, if you could
Thank you.
reserve the questions till the end, that'd be great. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, to present this to you. So we're talking about the 1300 Cleveland Avenue site. Okay, how do I... There we go. So, oops.
Sorry.
Okay. The agenda is a review of the case status, discussion of the PFAS regulation as it stands today, considerations for the site, approaches, and potential costs. Case status. GEI was asked to complete a Phase II environmental site assessment by the city. We were retained to do so. That assessment was completed in October 2020, and a report was issued to the DNR in February 2021. As a result of that, the DNR issued a responsible party letter to the city, which resulted in site investigation activities being completed to address the initial findings. That site investigation was initiated in April 2021, and it's currently ongoing. The DNR agreed to our conclusion that the site investigation was complete, except for PFAS, when they issued a reply to our site investigation report in April 2022. As a result of the DNR's request for additional assessment of PFAS, we completed groundwater sampling in December 2022 and followed that up with another event in April 2023. Most recently, which is the primary reason for our presence today, is the DNR recently, in September 2023, issued an email to the city requesting further delineation of PFAS beyond the site boundaries. Current status of PFAS regulation. DNR has codified standards, as you're probably aware, for drinking water. They've also codified standards for surface water. They do have soil standards as well, but only for direct contact, not for protection of groundwater pathway. And currently, the DNR has not codified any standards for non-potable water. Department of Health Services has developed and recommended groundwater standards. They've recommended individual standards for individual analytes and combined analytes in total. EPA currently has codified standards none, but they're proposed to establish maximum contaminant levels. Those are pending. There was some thought that those might be codified in 2023, more likely in 2024 at this point. In terms of what the DNR may do, if the MCLs are established by EPA, DNR typically adopts the MCLs as NR140 enforcement standards, which is the primary groundwater standard in Wisconsin. DNR typically sets a lower action level, a preventive action level, at 10% of the enforcement standard. And as a result of adopting MCLs and generating groundwater standards, the DNR would typically generate soil standards for groundwater protection based on the established NR140 enforcement standards. So I guess in summary, currently, there are no groundwater standards in Wisconsin, but it's anticipated that there will be once a MCL is adopted by the EPA. Two PFAS compounds are designated as hazardous substance by the EPA that was completed in September 2022. DNR's stance is that as hazardous substances, even though there are no regulated standards or codified standards, they're subject to regulation under the spills law and also are subject to the investigation remediation requirements in NR700. So even though there are no currently established standards for groundwater, DNR stances they can require investigation remediation. Soil standards at the site currently are below direct contact standards. So the concentrations detected in soil at the 1300 Cleveland Avenue site are currently under direct contact standards. However, if federal MCL is adopted, codified by DNR, we anticipate that if the DNR generates a groundwater protection standard for soil, that some of the data would likely be above that standard. Groundwater values at the site are below current drinking water standards. Obviously, the site groundwater is not used as a drinking water source, but if it were, it would be below the current drinking water standard. Some groundwater values at the site would be above the NR140 PALS and ESs, again, if the DNR would adopt the federal MCL. And some groundwater values currently at the site are above the recommended Department of Health Services standards. Considerations. In terms of the information at hand currently, we have no confirmed current or prior source of PFAS identified at the site. PFAS was included by the city in their original scope of work for thoroughness. PFAS in groundwater near the site does not pose an imminent threat to human health. It's not currently being used as a drinking water source, which is the main exposure pathway of concern, would be ingestion. It's our belief that PFAS is most likely a regional condition, common to many urban areas. However, additional data beyond the site boundaries may be necessary to support that conclusion. More and more data is generated every day in urban areas, and I think as time progresses, the collective data will likely support a conclusion, but it's a matter of time. And then in terms of the overall site redevelopment, PFAS, we don't anticipate is going to have an impact on the redevelopment. The primary, I guess, the cleanup costs for redevelopment are going to be primarily associated with managing soils that are impacted by other contaminants such as PHs, metals. And PFAS is primarily just an analyte contaminant of concern that needs to be addressed to obtain site closure. So in terms of what can the city do, we laid out a number of approaches that are possibilities. One approach is to wait for codified standards and/or the site redevelopment plans to come into more focus. However, the timing is uncertain. Obviously, we thought the redevelopment plan might be at the forefront before now. It's not. And also, the timing for codifying standards in Wisconsin is also uncertain. If the city decides we're going to wait, there is a possibility that the DNR could seek enforcement action. We don't think it's likely, but it is always a possibility. Another approach would be for the city to continue monitoring at the existing groundwater monitoring wells on the site. There are five established wells. That may provide additional data to allow us to evaluate trends on the site, might provide us more information on whether it appears to be an upgradient source contributing to the concentrations on the site. It might allow us to evaluate whether minor fluctuations in the part per trillion range are just that, minor fluctuations, and then it might drop down again below standards. It's a possibility. But the other alternative, I guess the other potential outcome is it may just confirm what we already know, is that it's low levels, it's widespread, and it's a background condition, likely a background condition, and you're not going to be able to just use that data to support a closure. Another approach is we can attempt to obtain data from the local area to support a conclusion that onsite values are representative of a wider background condition. That would require us to gather more information. It's possible that we could request access to other known wells in the area. I think many of you are probably familiar with the Walco site. They do have a number of wells in the area that are active. They're not being monitored for PFAS. It's possible we could approach them for access to monitor for PFAS. I think that's a low probability of coming to fruition, but it's something we could pursue, which would be a low-cost option to try and get more data at wells that are already established. The other opportunity to try and achieve this objective would be to install a well or wells upgradient of the site, which may help us to either confirm that it's a wider condition or confirm that there might be a source further upgradient of our site that could be a more likely source of the PFAS than what the probability would be for our site. And the final approach we're presenting is you just agree with the DNR that additional extent is necessary, and you go beyond the site boundaries to evaluate what conditions are beyond the site boundaries. And that could be, again, through requesting access to other local wells in the area. Again, I think that's low probability of occurring because I don't see any upside to them allowing access to other wells. If we extend beyond in certain directions, primarily south and west of the site, that would likely require approval from adjoining owners to access their sites and advance wells, advance warnings and install wells on their property. They may allow access, they may not, depending on how cooperative they would like to be. Otherwise, we may have to extend the investigation a little bit wider beyond what we would normally do and use city right-of-way to try and establish some type of extent of the groundwater contamination. I guess, however, in conclusion, with the extent alternative, if it is a background condition, which we believe it is, and the goal is to establish concentrations consistently below the DHS values, it may not be practical to define the extent. So you may just keep going and going and going and going and spending a lot of money and a lot of time along the way to not establish an extent that is satisfactory to the DNR. Potential costs. We put these together real roughly to give you an idea of if you do take some action, what costs might be incurred. I think the one to focus on is the bottom one. If ultimately you decide to agree with the DNR and try and define the extent of something around the site, I think it's reasonable to expect around a $50,000 effort, depending on what the DNR would like to see in terms of a definition. And again, if it is a background condition, it's very likely that those next wells that are installed are going to show similar concentrations. Then you'd have to go beyond that, and then this could very easily balloon in cost. And when we put a number there, $100,000 as a reasonable next step after that. And that concludes the presentation. Did I keep it to 15 minutes?
Okay.
Pretty good.
All right. Yeah, it was 13 and a half minutes. Good work.
Perfect.
So the reason we put this on our agenda today is because it doesn't fit nicely into a committee, I don't think. We have a couple committees this could touch. So I want to make sure that people have the opportunity to talk about what does that process look like, since we've had a lot of process discussions lately. So, thank you. I'm going to open the floor to questions, and maybe we can come up with some agreement on where we go next. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the information and presentation. I have several questions. The first one, just for clarification, you've indicated you didn't think there was any imminent risk or hazard, but is it then, are you also asserting that there aren't any receptors at all with the groundwater?
Currently, it's my understanding that there are no potable water wells being used in that area of the city.
Okay, thank you. So I've got your site investigation report in front of me that GEI authored, and if you just bear with me for a moment, it's on the page label, it's labeled 20, it's page 24 of the PDF. It talks about the location of the site being roughly a half mile west of the Wisconsin River, and it indicates that the groundwater flow is east-southeast, which would be toward the river. So from your own report and from reports like Walco north of there, my understanding is there is a natural discharge of the groundwater at this site in parts to the Wisconsin River. And my understanding, as someone who lives in that neighborhood and the older person of that district and ward, that people fish and swim and recreate in that river. So while they're not drinking out of the faucet, my understanding is there are likely receptors when it comes to discharge into the river. And, you know, in the future, I'd like to hear how the surface water standards that you mentioned, what's discharging from our groundwater, how that relates to surface water standards as well. But one thing I wanted to mention, and I've heard this a lot, you know, from other cities and so forth, that one thing, you know, residents on the ground can do very well is provide kind of primary observations that wouldn't be readily apparent to consultants when they're reviewing data. And so in that neighborhood, between the site and the river, there are multiple properties that appear to have what looks like groundwater infiltration in the basements. And you can notice this through sumps. And in fact, I'm sure some of the DPW workers have noticed this nearby the DPW facility. Some of the homes have hoses running from the house to the stormwater sewer, and those are flowing constantly during warm season. So my second concern and assumption would be that there would be potential exposure in some of those basements, and that would be another potential receptor set. But I have some questions about an email that the city council received from the Public Works Director on December 11th of 2023, just to get your opinion, I guess, on the statements that were made to this body. One statement says that the request is beyond the scope of the original responsible party letter. As the consultant and expert, are you in agreement with that statement?
The request is beyond...
The DNR's request for this further groundwater investigation?
Is beyond the scope of the...
Original responsible party letter?
No, I wouldn't agree with that. If the DNR is requesting it, then they suggest that it's part of the site investigation, then it is part of the site investigation.
Okay, thank you. Because my understanding, typically in responsible party letters, it indicates that if contamination has migrated elsewhere, that's part of the quote-unquote "site" that's being investigated. I've got some other questions about that email. It states that there was a request to investigate an unregulated contaminant, and in a separate email from the Public Works Director, it states that there are, bear with me, something to the effect of there are currently no mandates or regulations that would require the city to move ahead with this request. You stated in your presentation, which was my understanding, is it correct that the spills law applies to PFAS contamination regardless of any numerical standards that are adopted or have yet to be adopted?
Yes, that's the DNR stance, yes.
So there are regulations in place regardless of codified standards?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, let's see here. In one of the letters, it emails from the Public Works Director, I believe we were cited a cost of potentially $250,000 to fulfill this request. Based on what you just displayed, that appears to be a fraction of what was communicated to us in that email, so that wasn't an accurate statement either?
Yeah, the $250,000, I'm not sure where that came from, but...
Me neither, yeah.
But I think, as the last slide suggested, it's our, I guess, conclusion or assumption that this is a background condition. And if it is a background condition, and we are tasked with defining an extent of a background condition that is in the tens of parts per trillion range, that it very well could exceed $100,000, and it could approach $250,000. That is a possibility.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple more questions and perhaps some for the DNR later on. You talk about background condition. Even on the site itself, the groundwater samples that were taken on the site itself, they weren't uniform levels, per se, were they? You had some that were significantly lower than others?
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't use the word significant when we're talking tens of parts per trillion. I don't think that's a variance that would be significant.
So if the DHS recommended groundwater standard is 20 parts per trillion combined, and some of these were, I don't know, above 40, if I recall a little bit, then if some were below 20, almost 50% less than that, you wouldn't consider that significant?
No.
Okay. And then with other sites we've seen in Wausau, in the Wausau area, we haven't seen necessarily uniform levels, have we? I mean, we just, at the 3M Greystone property on the outskirts of town, that was a few hundred parts per trillion, so not uniform in terms of the levels we'd seen. So would you consider that insignificant as well?
Once you get into the hundreds of parts per trillion range, I think there's a higher probability or likelihood that that's associated with a source rather than a background condition.
Thank you. And then lastly, just because it was brought up, you had brought up certain contaminants that would be at play when we address remediation and redevelopment. I don't think I heard thallium mentioned. And when I read your reports to the DNR, there seems to still be uncertainty as where did that come from historically? Could there be that type of level elsewhere in the neighborhood? But nevertheless, DHS did an assessment of the property, and even with simple trespassing, they had said there was an apparent public hazard if small children were to go onto that property at a certain interval or what have you. So with all of the remediation and redevelopment that I've heard about, including what the community development department's been planning to some degree with the university program, it's residential and possibly daycare. So regardless of where that came from, would that really alter an assessment from the DHS that there would be a potential hazard? And just to distill that, at that point, would it really matter where it came from, or would we not have to kind of address those pathways?
I think that would be a question for the DNR, since the DNR has approved our site investigation report and has concluded that, at this point, thallium does not warrant further consideration in terms of assessment.
But you are aware of the DHS assessment letter?
I am not aware of the DHS assessment.
I'll make sure that's forwarded to you. And then lastly, I just say you brought up redevelopment, and yes, the city has been communicating with the university program. But as the city knows and the DNR knows, as the older, I'm holding public listening sessions on remediation and redevelopment in February. There'll be three of them, so I'd certainly keep you posted on sentiments from the community when it comes to contamination. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Denny.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, just, my question is maybe similar to what Alder Killian asked regarding the courses of action relative to what the zoning and what the residents and economic development team have been looking at. So if we're looking to potentially develop this for something sooner than later, then course of action weighted out might not be a good option. Would you lean toward a different course of action or preferred course of action based on what the development is looking at?
You want to answer that?
Well, I think in general terms, when you redevelop a site, there's a great opportunity to control risk, to reduce risk. And it's usually done through a combination of removing the most highly impacted material. Typically, that would be landfill combined with maybe some consolidation of moderate to low-level materials and capping what remains. And you would be looking at all the exposure pathways that may be relevant based on the residual contaminants. You know, that could be direct contact, you know, having a surface barrier in place. Could be potentially leaching to groundwater, having some hardscape. But when sites like this, I mean, this would be, in our view, a fairly typical brownfield site redevelopment, where pretty much anything that you put on the site is going to occupy the majority of it. It's going to be a combination of hardscape, pavement, buildings, some landscaped areas that would have some, you know, fill, you know, you could put some clay and seating layer. All of those are good engineering controls to protect against exposure to what may be left in place below ground. And it is definitely common in virtually every urban redevelopment site I've been involved with, for there to be some degree of impacts left in place. And some of those impacts are above standards at the time of closure, but it's documented in the public record. It's documented in GIS registries with the state so that future owners know, you know, that's there, and it has to be handled accordingly, you know, based on the rules at some future date.
And again, in terms of timing, we don't anticipate PFAS driving. site redevelopment. However, if, if it's a, a goal to have a site closed, a regulatory case site closed as part of a redevelopment, which is ultimately, we're going to have to do some type of, as Roger indicated, some type of remediation through source removal or capping, that's going to be required to get the case closed. And if that happens during the course of redevelopment, then I would anticipate that you would want to also address the extent, if the DNR requires that at that time.
Thank you.
Other questions from this body? Alder Gisselman.
Thank you. This is, PFOS is becoming quite a large issue in this community. And as the mayor said prior, that it really doesn't have a home. So I would, with regard to the northwest, northwest side as well as 1300 Cleveland Avenue, so I would suggest that perhaps the CISM committee start to take this under its wing. I think this, as we go forward into 2024, I think that this issue of PFOS, the development, the curing, the background conditions, the exposure, I think the whole development of PFOS in our community needs someplace for it to call home to, as part of the city council. So I would, I would urge the CISM to take it under its wing, because I think, like I said before, I think it needs a, a home, and I think that would be the, perhaps the best place for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, suggestions, questions? Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would, if, if it's possible, and when GEI's concluded, would we have the opportunity to ask the DNR some questions?
If the DNR is willing.
Yeah.
Sure. I don't, I don't see any more questions from this body. Is there anybody that has a question they'd like to direct at our present, presenters? Okay, well then, of course, we will welcome you.
Yeah, well, I'll just introduce. My name is Matt Thompson. I'm a regional supervisor for the R and R program, the program that oversees cleanups around the site, kind of around this area. Yeah, any questions on, on this are definitely welcome.
Yep. If you want to push your button, I'll be able to know that you have a question. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and GEI had covered some of it, but I'd be interested to hear from the DNR. So when we're told that there aren't any regulations right now where we would be required to kind of heed the type of requests that the department has given, is that the department's view too? Or is there, are there regulations like the spills law or other things that, that give the DNR some authority over this?
Yeah, I think as, you know, as Mike clarified, the department's stance is that these are hazardous substances, and they would fall under the spill law. Even though we don't have a defined, say, cleanup level, there's still, you know, there's a risk to the environment, human health, and that's why we feel like these need to be investigated, to just understand the full extent. So the department's stance at this point is that investigation is required, and it can be required, under our spills laws, similar to what, what Mike said.
And similar to what Mike said with the responsible party letter, does that typically cover if migration from a site has, or contamination from a site may have migrated elsewhere off the property?
Yeah, so responsible party letters, you know, kind of give us broad authority to ask for an investigation. You know, might start on a site and migrate, you know, just kind of stay in the neighborhood. If we think about the Waleco site, you know, you have a, kind of a discreet source in the middle of a property and expands, and so they've been putting monitoring wells in throughout, you know, the neighborhood. Similar situation here, we would have that authority to ask for monitoring wells downgradient. And when I say downgradient, I'm talking kind of groundwater flow direction. And so here, groundwater would, would generally flow toward the Wisconsin River, so we'd put monitoring wells toward the river. But we'd also encourage monitoring wells upgradient, you know, in an area that we would expect to be maybe off-site or potentially clean. We see that at, at sites all over the state, you know, even here in the city. So it's not uncommon to see kind of a monitor network expand in both directions.
Thank you. And I guess one more question that had come up, and maybe tonight's not the night because it was PFOS focus, and this could be something to address later, but just the issue with thallium and kind of if it's viewed as a hazard concentration at that point, regardless of where it comes from historically or what have you, typically, would that still be something the city, if we're going to redevelop it, we'd want to recognize and address? Or is that a question that would be better posed for DHS? In the situations you've worked in, what, what has been the experience with something like that, I guess?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I know, you know, I think the presentation, you know, really called out PAHs, but, you know, Mike also alluded to metals, and so thallium would kind of fall into this suite of metals like lead or arsenic, cadmium, you know, things that we typically see. But thallium is showing up at this site. And once come down to redevelopment, trying to make a plan for that, we'd really just have to decide what the cleanup standard should be, and or is this going to be industrial or non-industrial? I understand that's a hot item to talk about in the city, so I don't want to go down that. But I think when we would just talk about cleanup standards, it's thallium could be rolled into that, just like PAHs, arsenic, lead, anything like that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. I, I'm sure you'll be hearing from us soon.
Yeah, thank you.
So we did have a suggestion that CISM kind of discusses this. Is there anyone? Alder Watson.
I actually think it's sort of in the Public Health and Safety Committee realm. I'm looking at the, the description, and it says, in the couple last sentences, "to investigate, coordinate, and make recommendations concerning groundwater contamination, air quality, and other environmental issues." So I think that's sort of baked into their mission. So I would, I would suggest Public Health and Safety.
All right. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. We've not discussed that issue. I mean, just at a cursory level in Public Health and Safety, we did have some discussion, but it's been quite some time. We would certainly be willing to take that subject on if that's the council's wish. I mean, as, as it becomes necessary, we can place agenda items if needed.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regardless of where this goes or doesn't go, I'd like to say as the older person for the district in which this site resides, that I find anything other than complying with the DNR's requests in a timely fashion, which in this case means essentially now moving forward, that will be unacceptable to District III and the older person. And as a matter of city policy and public perception and confidence in that policy, I'd remind the body that we have advocated to address PFOS in our city. We've spent a lot of time and money doing so. And if now when our state regulators request that we do this groundwater study, if there is resistance to that or delay or willy-nilly send you through committees, through some endless labyrinth, that too will be unacceptable, and I think it will be the optics of hypocrisy. If there is contamination in District III and state regulators request an investigation as the older person, I want that done. And certainly, that's up to a body vote, but it will not be acceptable to the district, any alternative than complying with the department's request in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thanks. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's also very clear in the, in the first paragraph of the city's, of the, of the definition of the CISM committee that, you know, the CISM committee will take care of all lands, you know? And so perhaps, I, I don't mean to argue in between committees, but, but if it, if it means, if it takes, means one or the other or a joint effort, let, let's get it done. Thank you.
Thanks. Alder Denny.
Yeah, it's just so I'm clear. So it sounds like we had, we were, we were given three courses of action, if I saw that correctly. So at some point, if we decide to go that route, we're going to have to pick one of those. Or has, has the DNR set up the specific recommended evaluation? Or is that, is that open for interpretation? And I don't know if that's a question that could be re-asked of the DNR.
Are you, are you willing to answer that question?
Yeah, absolutely.
We, we just need you by the mic because we're recording it. Thank you. Nope, that's okay.
Yeah, the course of action are certainly all on the table. The department wants to work with the city, and we definitely don't want to come in and be prescriptive and say, you have to do this specific course of action. You know, and I understand, you know, that the email response that I sent, you know, to the city, to GEI, was pretty generic, could be left open, a lot of interpretations. But generally, what I see is there's a back and forth, kind of working together to come up with a scope that can work for everybody. Because we understand coming in and saying, you've got to do $100,000 worth of work, it's a lot for any community. And so what we really want to do is try to maybe start small and build up, but also address any concerns with human health or the environment. So we can definitely have some back and forth, I think.
Yeah, I guess that's what I want to hear. So just, it could potentially be a committee, the whole could be one of these committees, but I think we need to move the cheese on this pretty, pretty soon, at least get an idea of which way we want to go with it. And start small is always better than not starting at all.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think it's important for us as a community to work in partnership with the DNR. I don't think that, that relationship needs to ever be perceived as adversarial. I think we're two units of government that both want quality environment. I also think, though, that it is possible that we have barely scratched the surface with the discovery of PFOS in this community. I think it's going to keep being found, it's going to keep needing testing, and it's going to keep needing to be remediated. And I would be willing to guess that there is likely PFOS in most of our districts, especially those that have joined the river where there were historically industrial applications, where, you know, we've already seen that land reuse has been difficult, where remediation has been necessary. And in many cases, that remediation and development of those sites have required government involvement, specifically because the private sector alone either couldn't or wouldn't do it. So, you know, I think first, we need to recognize that there is likely PFOS in a number of districts, certainly not just this site and not just District III. I think that we're going to find citywide that we have needs for these type of processes. I don't see that we need to push an immediate need, though, to redevelop 1300 Cleveland Avenue. We pushed aside multiple projects that wanted that site because of this. And so I think that we should certainly not be pushing to quickly further any redevelopment project until we've decided on what the approach should be. And we also are involved in some litigation that's specifically PFOS-related. We already have expended monies where we have documented costs for the treatment of PFOS in our water system. And so, you know, we don't know what our options are ever going to be for the outcome of that. But if that yields positive results, it certainly could help us with the research and the cleanup of other sites as well. I mean, we don't know yet. Will there be a settlement? We don't know. And we have no clue what the money part of that could ever be. And so until that picture is in a clearer focus, excuse me, until we know a little more about what that picture is going to look like, you know, I don't think that we should be in a raging hurry to spend, you know, $100,000 or $200,000 on, on this particular cost. I think we can start with a partnership with the DNR, you know, if we need to start small and maybe expand our efforts. But I certainly don't think that it needs to be some sweeping, all-encompassing thing, like immediately. And if there's no, I mean, you know, are there vectors? Sure, there's vectors. But everything that's in there and everything that we have in the community has likely been in there for most of our lifetimes. So, you know, do we want to work towards a goal? Absolutely. But, you know, I also think that we need to be smart in how we approach it. So, thank you.
Thanks. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'd like to address some of the history that was stated, and certainly I agree that PFOS is not just in District III, but if you want to go on the DNR's public-facing database of contaminated sites, at least the last time I checked, that was the only site on the database in Marathon County, and it happens to be in District III. Furthermore, just right across the street almost is the former 3M dump that was once a 16-acre dump for 3M Company in the 1960s. It had suggested, you know, very benevolently, that it would gift that property to the city for a park if it could continue dumping for another five years or so. So I think, you know, if I, if I was a betting person, I would not probably be one that betted against the history of just the scope and intensity of contamination in that southwest area. And I think often, history is the best indicator of what could happen in the future, or history can be a teacher to guide us in ways that we do not want to repeat the mistakes of history or policy history. And I think the body and the public, it would not be hard to recall that in Riverside Park, the city pushed back for years to do more testing despite repeated requests from the community and some recommended sample spots and numbers from the DNR, and it dragged its feet for years, and we know how that ended. Now, let's look at this site again. I believe it was 2018, the city of Wausau was going to move ahead with RFP and development on that property, 1300 Cleveland, without doing any further investigation, even a refreshed study of the site in, in terms of a Phase I. That was pushed by the community. What we found was that we should have been doing the testing there because both rounds confirmed rather widespread contamination. Now, that came after decades, really, of inaction after buying the former Connor property, when we should have done more then, and in the interim between then and 2018. So when you look at the history of these sites on the southwest side, what you see is despite data, despite objective quantitative information and calls from the community and at times District older people, the city has dragged its feet with poor results, and we do not need to repeat Riverside Park or Thomas Street again on this property. So I think, you know, there were some wise commentary about starting at a smaller scale and working our way out, if that's acceptable, to regulators. But an alternative of doing nothing or not doing this immediately, I would feel, would not only be unacceptable and reckless, but imprudent. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from this body? Any follow-up? Okay, so just to recap, what I'm hearing is maybe we'd like to start the conversation at CISM and as soon as we can. Okay, nodding. We would obviously like to continue working with our partners in state government, so thank you for that. And so the community can expect this conversation as soon as maybe even the next CISM meeting that is capital improvement, street maintenance. All right, I'm seeing everyone nodding in the right ways. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your passionate discussion, and we will continue having this conversation. So thank you. All right, we're going to move on. I was asked to remove three items from our consent agenda, so if there's no opposition, I'll be removing item number 231211. This is a resolution approving the Third Amendment to the Planning Option with Gorman and Company LLC for the redevelopment of former Westside Battery and LNS Printing Properties. I was also asked to remove item number 050406. This is a resolution extending the life of Tax Increment District Number Six for affordable housing. And then finally, the last one was item number 231110, a resolution approving the 2024 Street Reconstruction Projects and Authorization to Let Bids. So if there's no opposition to that, the consent agenda will be as presented, aside from those three items, we'll talk about them separately. So that's good with everybody? Okay, cool. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's item 231201 through item 230108. Aside from those three that I removed, I have a motion by Alder Henke and a second by Alder Lukens. Is there any discussion here? No. Okay, we're going to vote on those.
You may begin voting.
Do you want to tell us what your vote is? That's okay.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we are on file number 231211. This is a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the Third Amendment to the Planning Option with Gorman and Company LLC for the redevelopment of the former Westside Battery and LNS Printing Properties at 415 South First Avenue. I have a motion by Alder Henke and a second by Alder Rasmussen. Would we like to start discussion, or would we like a spiel from our community development team? we like a spiel from our community development team? Anybody?
I would like to hear the reasoning behind this was removed from the consent agenda.
I don't remember which one of us asked for that, but, uh, which one of you requested? It was Westside Battery. It was either Alder, oh, it was Alder Denny. Okay, maybe you could share it with us.
Oh, thank you, Mary. Sure, I was looking to understand the, I guess, the impact. It seems like, God, here, I'm sorry, that it's kind of open-ended. We don't know exactly what the potential cost will be until 24, 25, or 25, 26. Could you explain at least what, what we expect that potential city outlay will be?
We are still in the development agreement negotiations right now, so it would be very, very, very speculative of me to say. The impetus for this Third Amendment to the planning option is because we needed Gorman to line up more of their financing. They had quite a few key sources that we didn't know about until November. So we are still working on putting the development agreement together that we plan to have to Economic Development and Finance in, I think January is the, the aim date for that. So this plant, this Third Amendment basically takes the deadline from December 31st of this year for the planning option, to June 30th of next year, which we plan to coincide with the closing date and commencement date of the project, that, like I said, is in negotiation.
But when we selected the Gorman Group, we had some understanding what the city ask would be, did we not?
Yes, we, so right now, what we anticipate is around $550,000. And the reason we won't know the final gap amount on that is because that won't happen, like, the, the city contribution wouldn't happen until they convert to permanent financing, which would be upon full occupancy, which would be 25 to 26. So the, we have to come back to understand what that is, because HUD run, rent rates can change in that time, and we want to make sure that they're maximizing their rent rates and things like that through HUD. So it's very much, we, we won't know a final number, even when we come to the development agreement in January, February.
But we know a range?
Yes.
So it's, it's not 1 million to 20 million?
No.
Okay. And then are there any, any hiccups right now that you see in that project that, that could significantly alter which way we move?
We are working on a sewer line relocation right now. So in 2019, there was a sewer line put through the Westside Battery site. They have, they have some numbers for that built into their pro forma, but we are working on several different configurations of what that relocation can look like. So that's the thing that's mainly in flux right now.
Okay. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in other words, all these people that we've seen working are, they're checking out the sewer line there, is that correct?
Their planning option allows them to do due diligence, so they're doing, I think, I mean, they can go on that site and do various pieces of testing, but they probably are not looking, the sewer line is several, I think it's like 20 feet deep or so.
Eric's out there talking to someone else.
Yeah, well, and I know Randy's been working very closely on this project, so that's why I'm looking to him.
He's nodding.
Yeah. So, yeah, they're doing different types of testing.
But that's, that might, back to my original question, what I was going to ask you was, if I remember this original agreement, this was that for Gorman, they had to get some kind of grant money or government money?
Yes.
In the amount of a million, $2 million or something?
Good memory, yep.
Did that ever come to fruition?
Yes. So that was the federal, the home loan, Federal Home Loan Bank of Chicago, and that determination was made in November. That was for a million dollars, and that, they did receive that money. So that was, that was a key piece.
That was a major hiccup. That was a major hole up in the project.
Right, that was a big piece of what we were looking for. When I mentioned key funding sources, that was one of them.
So that's been put together, so?
Yes.
This can move forward then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I don't see anybody requesting to speak, so I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you, everyone. The next item is item number 050406. This is a joint resolution extending, from Economic Development and Finance, extending the life of Tax Increment Districts Number 6 for affordable housing. This was requested to be removed by our Council President, so I think, if you want to give a little bit.
I know that, I, I listened to the meeting, but I did get a lot of calls. And for transparency's sake, I just think we should rehash?
Sure.
What this means, because it's a big deal. People, the questions I'm getting is...
Will it be open forever?
Yeah, will it be, it'll be open forever. This will be a slush fund. I don't know, I don't remember ever doing this before in my time here, so I think it's good to talk about it.
Okay. I don't know, maybe, I'm looking at, maybe Mary Ann, would you like to give just a brief hash of implications of this?
Yeah, so right now, the resolution does indicate that the fiscal impact is just slightly over $4 million. We won't know the exact amount until it comes time to calculate the values next year. You know, we're going through a revaluation, which could change values in the districts significantly. So that is an estimate based on the current year increment. You are allowed to set that aside in a fund to use for affordable housing, which 75% has to be affordable, 25% can be just improving the housing stock. The Finance and ED Committee both recommended to you, which is highlighted in the resolution, that it all be used for affordable housing, and that they wanted us to outline the projects that we would be using it for, which are also outlined in the resolution. But to basically improve and enhance and expand affordable housing in the City of Wausau. So there is no timetable of when those funds have to be spent.
Yep, absolutely.
So this still will, the TID 6, it was scheduled to, to close next year, not this year. Is that correct?
Right. So if, if you extend, we would need to close, which is outlined in the resolution, prior to April of 2025. If you extend, you need to adopt that resolution prior to April of 2024.
So when will this district definitely close?
It has to close by, if you extend?
Right.
It would have to close by April of 2025.
Thank you.
And the, I guess the template of the resolution is based on the recommendations of the DOR. So they have a template out there, and we have followed that, and I have sent them this resolution in advance to ensure that we've met their requirements.
Okay, I'm going to call on people as they have pushed their buttons. So Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, I was one of the members in the joint committee, and I recall that I think a few key things had come out of that discussion. And one of them was in terms of putting all of the money into affordable housing. It had been mentioned then, and perhaps today, that the statutory possibilities were using a million for housing in general, and it didn't have to be affordable. And I think it was kind of determined by the committees, they wanted to see it all used for affordable housing. And, you know, in that meeting, there was kind of a desire to see a formal plan of sorts of where are we going to put this. So kind of coming into this was, was hoping to see that. But I think, you know, the projects are listed in the resolution, and at least for me, I can't speak for others from those committee meetings, but I think that kind of satisfies what I was looking for, just knowing where we're applying the funds. So it wasn't kind of a carte blanche type situation. But the last thing, and I just wanted to touch base on this, because it was another component that had, I felt had pretty unanimous consent or support in the joint committees, is we had talked about, you know, there is a potential to use it for lateral replacement, but because it would equate to such a small percentage of that total project, we just would rather see it applied to housing needs outside of that. And it didn't state it in the resolution, and I just wanted to confirm tonight while we were voting on this, that that's kind of been taken out of the set of things we will, we will be applying the funds to, if I could just get?
Yeah.
Some confirmation on that.
When I look at this, when I look at the BEAT resolved, it says that the City of Wausau shall use the final increment for affordable housing to increase and improve affordable housing in the City of Wausau, including infill housing, multifamily housing sites located on Thomas Street, 700 Grand Avenue, 415 South First Avenue, and Sherman Street initiatives underway, and BEAT further resolved that the City of Wausau shall adopt a termination resolution between April 15th, 2024, and December 18th, 2024. And, another BEAT further resolved that the necessary city officials and staffs are hereby directed and authorized to send this resolution to the Wisconsin Department of Revenue authorizing the allocation of the tax increment for the district for more than, one more year. So to me, that, that first BEAT resolved tells us exactly how we're going to spend the money, and lead service lines are not in that. It is my understanding as well, that we wanted it all for housing, so I'm seeing a lot of nodding too. So I don't think, I mean, I'm not worried about it going there, but, you know.
On that note, Madam Chair, yes, I agree with you. Could we, just because I think one could consider it an element of improvement in relation to affordable housing, just so that we can kind of keep with the spirit of the committee conclusions, could we more explicitly put in the resolution that it will not be used as such? Because even in the media this morning, when I read the Wausau Daily Herald, they were apparently confused that this money was going to be applied toward that possibly. So could we explicitly put something in there to make sure there's no confusion in the future?
Sure, I guess I would be open to a suggestion. I heard you take a breath. Do you have a suggestion?
Oh, so I think on the 700 grand project, it would entail removal of the, is it stormwater lines that are in there? So?
Oh, the old line.
But that's not lead lines. That was, I guess, I have no problem if you want to say an exclusive of lead line replacement within the city or something like that. Yeah, it doesn't...
If that's, it's, if that's a...
So then, yeah, and I guess the other question I would have, so infill housing, if there's a lead line there, and we're trying to reconstruct that property, would you, would that be included? Or you wouldn't even want that?
I have no objections to that. It was essentially, like, isolated from those projects to be used in applications outside of those projects. Would have been my concern, but not if it's something integrated with the projects listed.
Okay. So do you think we could say, I'm just trying to find the easiest way to amend this. I'm sorry, what? Oh.
Oh, I just, I just have a note. In the third preamble, it does say 100% of the increment to benefit affordable housing. And so I'm thinking, like, in, in my mind, anyway, that seems to encompass the concern of, we want to make sure that this benefits affordable housing, because we do have to be, to Mary Ann's point, we need to be able to move some lines when, or other infrastructure, when called for, to produce affordable housing. So I just...
May I speak to that, Madam Chair? Thank you. Yeah, so that was not, I think, the understanding, intent, or will of the committee. So, well, there may be kind of a different understanding from, from staff, that, that was not my understanding from the committee discussion. So if, and I don't know if I need to amend the language, I'd be open to something friendly, just to kind of clarify. But no, other than integrated with the projects listed, I, I thought the intent was, was not to include lead lateral replacement.
Right. That is exactly how I understood. And so maybe the opportunity is to say, shall use the final increment solely for affordable housing to increase and improve? And I under, is, does that, does that get at the spirit of what you're hoping for, or does it need to be more explicit?
I think it does, Madam Chair, and we have the record today to kind of represent what we've discussed.
Okay. Do we feel good if, if we add the word solely, is that considered housekeeping? To my parliamentarian? Or would it need to be?
I'm making an amendment.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you to push your amendment button. Okay, you did. And so adding the word solely in front of affordable housing to increase and improve, that's, is that good?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
And it looks, we, we have a second here. I'm sorry, you have had your button on. Would, would you like to talk about this amendment, or would you like to wait until after we?
After the amendment, please.
Okay, perfect. All right. I'm just adding solely right here. See, Cody asked me why I wanted this printed out, and that as well. Okay. Good. Okay, so we have our amendment in front of us. What? Yep, we have a motion, we have a second for this amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, I think we can vote on that right now. Oh, Alder Lukens with a surprise.
Thank you. So I guess my only concern, my understanding is that it was to be solely for affordable housing, however, wait. So it'd be solely for affordable housing, correct?
Yes.
Oh, then that would include if, okay.
If in that list of four projects, there was a lead service line, we wouldn't leave that for the affordable housing occupants. I think that would be insane.
Yeah.
I think the spirit was, we're doing a huge lead service line replacement. This money will not go towards that giant project we just talked about in November. Yeah, okay. Yes, absolutely. All right, I think we're ready to vote on the amendment. You're voting on making sure that this is solely for affordable housing.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All righty. So we are now on to the resolution as amended, and Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. One of the other things that came out of our joint committee meeting was the discussion about the fact that this particular extension, for the purpose of affordable housing, really is a net positive for the community, because not only does it allow an on-time closure for the district, the district performed well enough that it feasibly could have closed a year early. So we're not actually extending the original length of the TID, but we are still capturing that extra year of increment. And this is one way that a tax increment district can work for areas that are not part of the tax increment district. So this allows us to capture that increment and use it anywhere in the city. Historically, during the life of a tax increment district, all of that growth and that revenue has to be reinvested back into that district territory on the map, or within a half mile of it. That restriction is off for this funding, so we can use it anywhere we need to entown, and we can make that growth that happened in that district, which is one of our best districts, put that money to work for the rest of the city. And so I think that's a net positive, and we're still not looking at a long-term life extension of the length of that TID, which is what sometimes aggravates the situation out in the community, and then even draws the ire of some other taxing jurisdictions. So I think that turns out to be a win for all involved. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Watson.
I think the, the idea that it's going to close on time, anyway, is sort of a big bonus, so none of the other taxing jurisdictions would be short, I guess, any increment. And it's not just an open slush fund. We have a sort of finite amount that's going to go to these projects, which I think is amazing. But I also think it's really important, too, because we have committed ARPA funds to some of these projects, to have this extension is crucial, because if we don't do those projects in a timely fashion, we won't be able to devote that ARPA funds to it. So I think it's a really great opportunity for us to finish that, and then not have all of that on the city. We can use some of that federal fund. So I'm hoping we'll, we'll get it going.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone, Alder Gisselman?
Yes, thank you. Just, you used the word infill. I just want to make sure that this also includes the single family, because we did talk a lot about the single-family housing. I don't want that concept to be lost.
It is not lost.
So infill can mean a lot of things, but I just want to make sure that it's clearly understood that as part of this, the single-family housing would be a big part of this.
Yes, the accompanying memo outlines the Thomas Street Affordable Infill Housing, and I assume that that's what you're referencing. That is priority number one, because it is affordable, single-family housing, that we've worked with the Thomas Street neighborhood to create renderings for, using the ARPA funds for that. That is the, the single-family housing, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any, Alder Killian.
Thank you, and I just would like to kind of offer some positive comments for Ms. Broderick and her staff, and the city, and this body for taking a very difficult, long history on Thomas Street, and having a public participation process that was inclusive...
history on Thomas Street and having a public participation process that was inclusive, and then using citizen feedback to drive policy decisions. I think that's a real kind of case study on how things can go well, and how we can marry city objectives with desires of citizens, and kind of to what I was speaking to earlier with some of the environmental things, I think we could extend that type of approach to what we just talked about with Cleveland Avenue and, and the contamination, I think, ultimately being sensitive to citizens' concerns and desires, and marrying that with policy. I think that tends to result in ideal outcomes, so very pleased and encouraged to just see what's happened with that positive resolution, yes.
Thank you, and I would agree. I think it was kind of a really, is fun the right word? I thought even the way that, the, the way that our consultant worked with the community was kind of interesting in a way we've never done before, so thank you for that. I don't see anybody else who's requesting to speak, so I think maybe we're ready to vote on this one. We are voting once again on the extending the life of the tax increment districts, number six, for affordable housing, plus that amendment to make sure that it is solely for affordable housing.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, this is the last item from consent agenda that I pulled, and that is item number 231110. It's a resolution from the Capitol Improvement Street Maintenance Committee approving the 2024 street reconstruction projects and authorization to let bids. Looks like I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Lukens. Oh, just kidding, is that, was that the other one?
Yep.
Well, maybe, all right, we have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder Herbst. Alder Lukens is the person who requested this, so if you would like to give a little detail on what you're looking for?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I made the motion so we could have this discussion. I was not able to attend the, the CISM committee meeting where this was approved. I did send an email. A number of several residents attended the public hearing on this, and I did as well. So this, at the end of Eau Claire Boulevard, the, there is a cul-de-sac at the west end of it, and there are eight houses in that cul-de-sac, and it, so there's a sidewalk in the cul-de-sac area, but it does not lead to Zimmerman Street, which is a cross street. And so the proposal is to, when Eau Claire is reconstructed, that there would be sidewalk installed to join the sidewalk in the cul-de-sac to Zimmerman Street. So the residents in the cul-de-sac have some concerns and requested that, that extra sidewalk not be installed, one, you know, it's, it's extra cost for the residents, and two, while I know there was discussion on the CISM committee, and I appreciate the thoughtful, thoughtfulness, the thoughtful discussion that went into that, walkability was brought up, and that installing the sidewalks would help increase walkability, and one, well, concern of the residents, which I think is a good argument, is along Marshall Street, which is the next street over to the west, it runs parallel with Zimmerman, and just on the other side of the cul-de-sac, but along Marshall Street, that is, that property is North Santo Health Care Center's property, and there is a paved path all, all along Marshall Street, the, on the west side of it. On the east side of it, there are no sidewalks. And so in the winter, that paved path is not cleared at all, and I walk my dogs there all the time. So in the winter, we have to walk on the street, and Marshall Street is much more traveled. The bus route, it's, it's definitely much more heavily traveled than the cul-de-sac. So in, in fact, when I, when I walk past there, because I, I live right, close to that, and I never really enter the cul-de-sac, just because I, just because I don't. So anyway, so that is, those were some of the concerns of residents, and I, because I could not be at the CISM committee meeting, you know, I wanted to make sure that that was understood by committee members, especially because walkability was brought up. If anyone that is on CISM would like to respond to that.
Sure, I have two people who have requested to speak, so I'll just call in order, and they, I think they're both on CISM, but Alder Rasmussen, you pushed your button first.
Thank you. We did talk about that. One thing we've talked about in general is walkability in developed neighborhoods, especially older neighborhoods that emanate from the city core. And the goal is to have a sidewalk grid that makes sense for people to navigate those neighborhoods. And part of the trouble we have, when we have sidewalks that lack connectivity, or they have gaps in, is then you have pedestrians out in the street, you have conflict between cars and pedestrians, and what happens is, is often, when you have some snowpack on those side streets, or you get a little freezing rain with that, and those streets are icy, then immediately along with that comes complaints about folks walking in the street, whether it be postal carriers, delivery people, residents, whatever it is. And then there comes a request for curb-to-curb sanding, which we had some discussion about the cost of trying to roll out something like that. It's not sustainable. And so our goal in CISM for the last number of years has not been to decrease the walkability scores of our neighborhoods, and certainly not to take out sidewalk where it exists today, but also to connect sidewalk where you can, when it makes sense to do so. I also think, as an aside, if Marshall Street is ever reconstructed, that we should mandate sidewalk there as well. I think there needs to be as much connectivity in those neighborhoods as you can get. People are walking to parks, they're walking to school, John Marshall is right up there. And so when you have that dynamic where neighborhoods are, you know, heavily utilized and they're walkable, those sidewalk grids have to make sense. And so we talked about leaving that section out that connects to Zimmerman, and that really does set a negative precedent. With the exception of one district in the city, we've had, largely had a lot of success with getting those sidewalk connections in and getting them to make sense, and we really did not want to backtrack on that. One of our engineers that had attended the public hearing and talked with those residents noted that some of the concerns, or at least one of the concerns, was increased foot traffic through the cul-de-sac. An increase in foot traffic, regardless of where it's going, really should not be perceived as a negative. 99% of the time in the committee, when we have complaints about sidewalk or its installation, it's because people, not only do they not want to pay for them, but they don't want to shovel. And so, you know, that also should not be a driving factor in us not creating a, a community that's walkable, where people can navigate safely in an area that is away from vehicular traffic. So that's, we, we talked through it at length, and as a committee, we came to the conclusion that all of the proposed projects that were proposed to add sidewalk should move forward with the sidewalk, just to keep that connectivity. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know that there's much left to add to what Alder Rasmussen said, but, you know, as committee chair, we did take your residents' concerns into, into consideration, but overall, the walkability and the safety of the neighborhood has to come first. And, you know, we, if we don't, we don't have to have people walking in the streets, we don't, we won't. You know, I, I think I would give anything to have a sidewalk in front of my house, because 99% of the time in the wintertime, it's, there's ice on the street, I can't, I can't hardly get my garbage can off the street without falling on my butt. You know, so safety, walkability, that's, and affordability, that was, that was all taken into consideration, and, and basically what we came up with what Alder Rasmussen said was for the safety of the citizens of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? All right, I think we are ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we don't have appointments tonight, but I am going to ask that we suspend our rules. This is 6B filing and 12A referral of resolutions. This does require a two-thirds vote. I have a motion by Alder Watts. Oop, just kidding, it's a lie. I have a motion by Alder Watson, and a second by Alder Henke. We're ready to vote on that one.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right, thank you very much. First up is file number 231210. This is a resolution in opposition of HR 3557, the American Broadband Act of 2023. I'm hoping that maybe Randy would like to just give us a little brief on this, although it is all in your packet, probably a lot of the information that he shared with us.
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor. By far not an expert on this, but I did do some research looking into it. Had an email forwarded to me, really along the lines of our public access channel, and one of the big things they had concerned about was the elimination of the cable franchise fee as part of this. I think overall, what we see as part of this bill is it's a bit of an overreaching, broad bill, taking away a lot of our local control. A lot of this seems to be being pushed by cable wireless telecommunications providers that are coming in to provide service, trying to eliminate our ability as a local government to control what they do, have fees in place for them, and just controls in there that we can make sure that they're being good partners of their right of way. Happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions here? Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Andy, I did look at this through the packet, so a vote yes would be to turn this down, is that correct?
It would be, we would, a vote no would be showing our opposition to this bill, which would be forwarded on to our local legislators.
And a vote yes would be then for it.
I don't know that, so the resolution's written in, in opposition form, so if you voted no on this, we just wouldn't take any action in pushing anything forward.
And a vote yes would be the vote against the resolution?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
Vote against the House resolution, yes, at least these, those portions that are outlined in this resolution. Alder Martins.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I got a question for you, Randy, in that, that with this, this, this House bill, the American Broadband Act of 2023, you mentioned that it would eliminate cable television franchise fees. One of the things that franchise fees do is that they, they fund our public access channels for both community programming and governmental programming. Would that mean also the elimination of those cable channels to citizen, as city viewers?
I don't know the answer to that, but it would definitely affect how we receive that revenue, and would be a serious question that we'd have to take on if that were the case, and those, the opportunity to have those channels was taken away. I think a lot of what we're seeing now, this meeting is a great example of it, being broadcast on YouTube, available to people all over the world if they so wanted to watch us, but just an opportunity, we'd have to revisit this if something were to happen and it was taken away from us.
Okay, thank you.
It's probably a budget discussion for this body at that point.
Yeah, because not only do the franchise fees, and, and, you know, whether the cable, the cable providers provide those, that, that cable play of our meetings, those franchise fees do help with the production costs of, of streaming this content onto YouTube and other streaming services, so that would not mean, you know, that means, well, even if I don't have cable television, I would still be able to see it. Well, not necessarily, because that, we, the loss of those franchise fees could inhibit our ability to air a public meeting in a public forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Alder, Alder Martins brought up a valid point about the funding. If we did not have the ability to tap into those franchise fees to the extent that we already do within our budget, I think we would have funding difficulties with sustaining public access. I mean, we, about four years ago, or maybe even prior to that, I'll almost date now, expanded the production of our meetings to all meetings. We put them all online, we started to broadcast committee meetings, which did not happen before. People have come to expect and appreciate that, and I think if we were to maintain that level of service without that funding source, we would have to find an alternative funding source within our budget or pairback programming, and that alternative fund source may likely be the tax levy. And so, you know, that right now is deferring some of the cost that the community absorbs in producing that content, and, you know, I think that the viewership of that is more every year. So it's important that we have that, that money available as a component of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Alder Denny.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, could you explain, or maybe you said, you mentioned an email, where, what was the source of this? Do we have somebody looking out for these in your staff, or is it coming from other?
Yes, this was forwarded to me. There's a couple different organizations that have been working on this, National Association of Counties, National League of Cities, U.S. Conference of Mayors, National Association of Telecommunication Officers. There's a number of, I think the league in Wisconsin's also monitoring this. It's been an ongoing effort.
All right, great, thanks.
All right, any further questions or comments? All right, I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. Next up is file number 231213. This is a resolution instructing city staff to prepare grant application to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for the Community Development Investment Grant for ESA LLC Bakery at 201 Forest Street. We do have Karen here, but we also have, maybe Randy, if you want to give us a quick little intro, it looks like we have a, it looks like we have a motion and a second, so I think we're ready.
I'll give a quick introduction, and I'll let Karen come up and kind of share what she's working on. So WDC, through their CDI grant, allows for a four-to-one match, meaning if Karen puts a million dollars into renovations of her business, that she can get $250,000 back from the state in funds. So this is a really good opportunity for us as a city, very minimal work on our, our behalf. Most recently, we worked with the Children's Imaginarium on this grant, very successful, and working through the reporting and submittal requirements, it was very easy for staff. WDC's very good to work with. So I'll let Karen explain what she's working on with her project, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on the grant.
Thank you for your time for all of this. So we currently own 201 Forest Street, which is near the post office and across the street from Home Furniture. It's a building that was, I think, Hoffer Glass for a long season of time, and passed probably nine years, has been in quite a bit of disrepair. So we're really excited, we're going to be revitalizing this into an artisan type of, like, think of French bakery with crusty blows of bread and croissants, and we're just are planning to also develop it into like a very large meeting space is also available there. And we just think it's going to be really piggybacking well off of the mall development, and kind of like just really marrying well, like, to revitalize that area.
Sure. Are there any questions from this body? I don't see any. I, oh, Alder Herbst.
The only comment is, I sure do wish you would have brought some samples along for us tonight, that would have been great. Thank you.
Another time, perhaps. We're a pro-carb body.
Me as well.
Anyone else? All right, I think we're ready to vote. Thank you.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. We look forward to bread. Make sure I'm not missing. All right. Next up is file number 231215. This is a resolution approving master partnership agreement between the city of Wausau, Wausau Waterworks, and Community Infrastructure Partners LLC for lead service line replacement and related infrastructure work. Looks like we have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Henke. This is the hullabaloo about replacing all of our lead service lines. We've been getting ready for this work, and just, was it last week or the week before, the EPA made another announcement saying that all municipal utilities will have to replace their lead service lines within 10 years, which is a new requirement. So we will be ahead of that, and this will get us there. I don't know, Eric, if there's more you want to explain, or if there are questions from this body, I know we've been talking about it quite a bit, but is there anyone with questions or comments? Alder Gisselman.
Thank you. Well, I, I think this is a fairly new organization, and I think just a little bit about it, it's, I think this is a large project for the city. What, have, has this organization done this before? Qualifications with regard to, to this project?
Sure, I can give you a little bit of background that I know. They've been involved in Prince George County, which I believe is Maryland, where they performed similar work. And in a previous iteration of this company, not CIP, they were also engaged, is it in New Jersey? Yep, okay, so they've done similar work. Now, I guess one of the idiosyncrasies of this partnership is while we're looking ahead for a five-year plan, this is agreeing to one year to see how it goes, how it works, to make sure that it's working for us, and we're getting the work done that we said we're going to get done. We've been working on the criteria. We've been working on the criteria for ensuring that our KPIs are met. So is that, is that good?
Well, follow up then, what, so local, I trust, local workers, well, this is a, what, a Connecticut firm, I believe. I didn't see them registered in the state of Wisconsin. Just, you know, how they're going to be conducting their work here in the city?
Sure, I don't know if, Eric, you want to start or if you want me to start?
So, you know, with, with some of the criteria in the contract, right, it's a performance-type incentive contract. And so when we talk about local contractors and we talk about local workers, right, there's focus in that contract that they're, that they focus on hiring local. And local is really defined as the state of Wisconsin, you know, a broad picture right now. And as the mayor said, this is a year-by-year contract. The individuals that are running this company right now have done this in New Jersey and other areas out east, but it was with stormwater, right? And this is a different delivery-type method. It's called a community-based, public-private partnership. And so it's actually how you deliver the work and get the work done. Like typically, we would do an engineering design, we would write specifications, we would bid the work, we would, you know, oversee it or hire somebody to oversee it. Well, we're not doing any of that under here. CIP is doing all of that work on our behalf, right? And so we will have a third party who will oversee their work and the work that gets done on the ground. And so they are doing everything from all of the planning, all of the public outreach, all of the door knocking, all, because as staff, we don't have the staff to do this, right? So, but to answer your question specifically about labor, yeah, it's in the contract that they need to focus on local labor.
Yeah, that's one of the key performance indicators was local. And I know that I've talked already to some folks from Launa, the union there. Some folks showed up to our kickoff who were union plumbers who were excited. So the other thing, the reason, the other reason we're year-by-year is because our funding comes year-by-year from the DNR and through bipartisan infrastructure law. So we don't get the whole five-year plan right now.
This is the first, this is the first project, yeah, this is the first type of delivery method to do it for lead service lines, right, in the country. So there are no other communities right now. There's quite a few other communities in the state. I've talked to some, you know, New Orleans and in some out-of-state that are potentially looking at this as a model to follow, but we'll be the first.
I'm just, I just want to make sure that they're very well-qualified to do a very excellent, I mean, this is a big project for the city of Wausau. I'm concerned that, you know, that they're well-qualified to carry out this big project, even if it's for one year. So with that, I think.
I can tell you, they're, they're working on it right now, even before the contract's signed, and they've done very good work for us. So that, yes.
And I'm sorry to keep babbling, but this has been, okay, I'm just going to say this and then I will turn it over to you, Anne. We've been working on making sure that they are using local folks, so we've, we've connected them with H2N, so it comes, so we can explain the health news in both Hmong and Spanish. So we're making sure that we're using local people who are trusted, in addition to these plumbers who we know will be certified and are working with us. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned, Gary, that, that you noticed they weren't registered to do business in Wisconsin, and we pointed that out to them and asked them to register to do business in our state, and they've agreed to do that. I'll make sure that that's there before the contract gets signed.
Yep, okay. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there are a lot of elements to this that look positive. As I tried to sift through the very robust contract, there's a lot in there and it covers a lot more than just kind of direct lead lateral replacement. I mean, there appears to be kind of an overarching program to this that I think was dermed, deemed quote-unquote "novel" in the contract. And there were a few things like, and I'm wondering if we have the ability to massage any of this that we're seeing in the contract. So when this first came up at the Water Commission, because they're going to be acting as a partner, almost agent of government in certain, on many important things, one thing I brought up at the Water Commission, in addition to the outreach, which you just addressed, was can we attach open meetings and open records to this relationship? I've seen it before in other public-private relationships, but the only times I've seen it, it has been embedded contractually because often private entities, they're not compelled to open up certain records and so forth as a private entity. So if they're going to be doing such a large amount of work in partnership or on behalf of the government, I brought up at the Water Commission, can we look at language to make sure that the meetings and records are subject to Wisconsin Open Meetings and Records Law in the same fashion that if there'd be confidential material, just as there would be currently under even things we do, that those aren't distributed publicly? But anything that wouldn't be of a privileged nature in terms of public work and records would be subject to those laws. Is there such a way that we can address that in the contract?
Mind if I go first, Eric?
No, please.
We want you to go first.
I believe that we can, and that's one of the main reasons why we worded the last paragraph, that we would execute the agreement in substantial compliance with the draft attached to make sure that we got the input from the council. And I, they've been very, very easy to work with. We've had a number of people here talking about it. They've had a team of like three attorneys on their end, and Eric's right, we're inventing the wheel with this template for our contract that they expect to use then throughout the state. And it is statutory in Wisconsin. It's called performance contracting. And so there are statutory requirements to this and things that they're allowed to do by statute. So we're making sure that we follow that. But I think that's a good suggestion. I think that's one that we could bring up to them and figure out where we could insert that.
And I will say, they haven't pushed back when we talk about open records and things like that. So it's, it's not a new conversation. It should be fine.
Okay, and one reason I brought it up is there's a Section 2.3.3, which is confidentiality and disclosure, and that language really seemed to put a veil of privacy on a lot. So that was another reason that I bring it up again tonight. There were a couple other details in the contract, and they mention if funds have not secured, been secured prior to or at the time of work, that they'd be willing to advance work, but then it would be considered interim financing and they would put an 8% annual interest rate charge on, on top of that. That's a little worrisome. So, I mean, without knowing the certainty of, of funds, I'd be a little worried about an 8% annual interest rate adding up over time.
Can I just, can I interrupt, maybe?
Yes.
I feel that anything about interim financing would have to be agreed to by a policy body, whether that's the utility, whether that's the council, whether it's both. So I don't, that couldn't, like, I couldn't just say, hey, get going, we'll pay the 8%. It would have to be a policy directive.
Thank you, that's some reassurance. It is in the contract. I mean, so I'm a little worried about that. And the other thing, just logistically, and I was wondering if we could massage some of these things before we sign it, if they're, if we're not up against like a 24-hour wall or something. The other thing was, they bring up, bear with me, it's a large document, you know, under the development of project books and so forth, requirements like not less than 15 months prior to the start of each construction season, the manager and city shall meet to review and discuss all proposed projects under the program. I mean, if we're getting close to initiating this in the future, are we still even within that contractual timeframe for the first round of work, you know?
We, we are, yeah. So we're, we're already know our area, you know, that they're working in for what's going to happen in '24. Shortly after the first of the year, we'll be initiating conversations about the '25 projects. We've already talked to them about the intent to apply for the 2025 funding. And so those conversations will continue once we get this contract in place and kick off the '24 actual construction and.
So we're good on that? I think that.
We are.
That addresses that one.
I think it's a good point because it's a long lead time, so I appreciate that. But it, but because of our, our funding, the, the main reason is because our intent to apply with the DNR had to be done at the end of October of '23 for 2025 funding, right? So there's just, that's just the timeline with the state and the, in the EPA. The funding is, is, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, those lead times, yeah.
So that addresses that, that item there. I think then the only, you know, it would be mainly about the, trying to add some language on the open meetings, open records, and, you know, I think that would be my main desired addition if, if possible. Thank you.
Is there opposition from this body of our city attorney pursuing that language? I just, I'm going to ask before I make anyone do it. Okay, I think that's a good thing that we can add. I'm going to go, okay, I see nodding from everyone. All right, Alder Larson, I'm going to let you go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have kind of two questions. And, and first of all, is, is this the only company that has come forward or has there been other companies?
This is the only company that responded to our request for qualifications. And, and so we publicly went out and advertised for a request for qualifications. And this is the only company that responded.
And my second question is, I was looking through the contract itself and it, and it said the city will pay for fees. What kind of fees are we looking to pay and what is the extra cost on that?
Fees, which section was that?
Like permitting and things like that? I don't.
So, yeah, because really any permitting fees, anything like that, is going to be borne by the contractor, right? So, so really what happens then, because the city right now is proposing to fund this through the DNR funding, right? And so those fees will be paid through that, yeah. So I'd have to see the specific section. Do you remember?
I was just wondering if that's just one instance of fees or if there's going to be more than one instance of fees, you know, or we're going to have fees, you know, kind of like my cable bill, I look at that and I see fees for this and fees for that and fees, fees, fees.
You still have cable?
Not for long.
Do you, do you have a specific area where you were looking at that or was it just, you just saw it a couple?
I just don't, well, that's, that's okay. You don't.
That's the only one that I'm aware of. It would be, would be the permit fees.
All right, thank you.
Well, there's Section 6.2, it's all about under Article 6 compensation, Eric. So Section 6.2, the base fee. For the project, and then they talk about performance-based fees in Section 6.3.
They might be talking about, about those, yeah. Yeah, how they've described their, their fees on how we're paying them, right, under performance incentives? So the performance-based fee with what the mayor indicated, the KPIs are the key performance indicators, they're calling those a performance-based fee. So, you know, those, those are fees that we'll be responsible for as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Denny.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess along the line of what Lou Larson was asking, we show fiscal impact is blank. Can we have some numbers on the second page? Do we have, do we have a rough idea what this will impact the city?
I believe I had a memo in there that went to the waterworks that had the breakdown of what we're.
Right, the memo says totaled 5.7, principal forgiveness 3.6.
Yes, that's what we received from the state.
Subsidized loans 1.1, where we have to, is that, is that a function of that 2.1? We're barred, we're, we're going to have to bond for that? Or is that a special program?
That's through, that's through the state, the DNR, Clean Drinking Water Fund or Clean Water Fund. Sorry, there's clean and safe, I just.
The Safe Drinking Water Loan, yeah. So they'll, so we can't get the principal forgiveness without taking the subsidized loan, so we have to take both of them. Now, CIPA is continuing to look at other funding sources to help offset that.
I've had a lot of conversations with foundations, national foundations, folks that care about getting let out of everything from housing to pipes.
Right. So I think that the other thing too is, you know, with whatever loan comes in, right, we cannot use user rates to pay for private side replacements. And so that funding will have to come from some other source. And so we'll need PSC permission with a mandatory replacement ordinance in place. We're working through that process now, but I, I don't think that'll be avail, you know, ready for the '24 construction season, so maybe for the '25, depending on this body, you know, reviews that, approves it, not approves it, however you want to. But we're working through getting that written, working with the PSC on what's required for approvals on that. And that'll come before the Utility Commission as well as the council through a resolution.
Okay, so then this action tonight is not approving, Mary Ann, the, the loan amount that we have to put on the books or?
No, this is just approving the contract.
Okay, and then the subsidized loan, we're, we're paying that back or the resident will be paying that back part of their?
I think that's part of the decision when, if the council approves the loan, that will have to be determined at that time.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, we know that the project is large, we know that it's cutting edge. We want to be first in a lot of these things. I mean, we've been at the forefront of all of this. I think that's helped us secure funding and grants along the way. It may help us secure more of those. I do trust that we have a qualified legal team. I trust that the partners that we have at the table also have qualified legal counsel. So I am content to move forward with this. I think that, you know, we've given the city attorney the option or the permission to add verbiage about open meetings and open records. I think that is good for transparency. But I think by and large, we want this project to take flight. We want to be able to go to our homeowners with old infrastructure and say to them, let us get this stuff out of here for you. And we've not been able to say that before. So our support of this is key in getting this project to take flight, and I think we should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I can't emphasize enough that this is historic funding that we're getting access to, and it's also history that we're making here, and it's being recognized. I've talked now, talked to the EPA more than I ever imagined, and we've had meetings and other communities are saying, oh, we're going to do exactly what Wausau's doing, but we're going to do it in two years, or we're just going to copycat whatever we're doing here. I know, I know Eric has been talking to folks from New Orleans, from everywhere, who want to do exactly what we're doing. And I will say, I met, I met the person who started this company initially at the White House last year during the Lead Pipe Summit. There were about 200 people invited, so a lot of exciting things happening. But yeah, we will be first, so. Other questions? Oh, here we go. Alder Gisselman.
Well, just, just requesting updates either to SISAM or to the Water Commission. I think that this, since, since this is a very large project noticeable throughout the city of Wausau, I'm sure that people will, and I think with city council people need to have that ability to converse back to their citizens exactly what's going on. So I'd appreciate those updates, either at SISAM here or at the Water Commission. Thank you.
I appreciate that feedback, Gary. Yeah, absolutely, we will.
Going to brag about it. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to clarify on that open records, because I want to support this tonight, what is the nature then of what we'll be doing? Will, will that be inserted and then in their, in their court to say, oh, yeah, that's reasonable, we'll do it? Or was what was suggested earlier is, well, that's something we'll bring up to them? I mean, could we do it where the intent of the vote is to indeed insert it and if they reject it, it comes back?
That's the way I interpreted what we talked about, but maybe, city attorney.
That would be my understanding. I know they've been weighing in and wanting to know how we're doing with it. We, I told them it would be on the council agenda this evening and we'd get the feedback from the council. So I'm sure tomorrow or the next day, they'll be asking, what was the vote?
Well, I'm sure they're watching tonight.
Yeah, you know, we, we're going to be asking you to include some language in that section specifically that you noted about the transparency issues and open meeting and open records. I can suggest language or they can, and then we'll work toward reaching an agreement on the language. And if they just say, no, we're not going to. And if they just say, no, we're not going to agree to that at all, I would anticipate bringing it back.
Could we formalize that it will be brought back if they do not sign off on the open meetings, open records language?
Sure, I don't have a problem with that.
That would be my only reservation, Madam Chair.
Is that an amendment that's required or is that an understanding of this body?
Well. Again, we drafted the resolution to give us the, you know, wiggle room to negotiate whatever extra the council wanted us to negotiate, so.
Well, then we'll bring it back if they don't agree to this between Ann and I. We'll get it done.
We'll be on the record stating that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
What else? Anything else? All, did you have? Nope. Okay. All right, I think we are ready to have a vote at this now.
You may begin voting.
Sorry.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you very much. All righty, next up, we have two items left here. We have file number 220105. This is a resolution approving revised First Amendment to Development Agreement with SC Swidersky LLC and SCS Wausau LLC North River Drive. Looks like I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Herbst. Is there a spiel anyone would like to give before we talk about this as a body? I'm seeing pointing happening.
You may remember that this amendment was already approved by council on, on the major terms that are in there, but then they called and wouldn't execute the First Amendment because they said they never formed SCS Wausau LLC. So then we discovered that they'd signed the development agreement on behalf of this non-existent entity as well. So we said, no, please do not sign the First Amendment. And then we went back and we had to revise it and bring it back to you, and then we've added in there the fact that at the time they signed the development agreement, that entity did not exist. And so at the time that they do form that entity, and we assume that they're working on that right now, they will go back and then assuming it's still SCS Wausau LLC, they will go back and sign a jointer of that development agreement. So we added that in with outside council on their advice to this revised First Amendment.
All right. Any questions or clarification needed? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. I think.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 8 to 3.
Thank you very much. We are now on to, ooh. Are we all connected again? Okay. We are now on to file number 231217. This is a resolution referring a request for sale of city-owned property. This is 902 and 904 West Thomas Street. I have a motion by Alder Watson, a second by Alder Herbst, and a request to speak by Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. These are remnant parcels, I assume, that are adjacent to this home?
I am seeing nodding.
We just, okay, so we just had, you know, a large sale, scale discussion in our CISM committee about the committee's duty to dispose of remnant parcels and price them. And so ordinarily, we take committee action on these. Now, we, I imagine this probably came along after we met. So, you know, are we okay to, I mean, the council can accept any item at once as direct legislation, so, but, or whatever it is, but direct, without a committee interference. But are we okay to do that or are we going to have that same argument again?
Well, I think this is the first step in a very long process.
Okay, so just curious, because ordinarily, the council gets it from a committee, not the other way. So we're, we're in front of the council, like, early is what this feels like, so.
So, Ann, I think, like, when you look at through the, the ordinance and the process to sell city property, I think it was the city attorney's interpretation that it was, it had to go to the council first and then it will move on to CISM and, yeah.
That's actually what the ordinance says, but to Alder Rasmussen's point, I'm not sure we've been doing it that way. That's why it seems different to you, because it is different.
It seems a little weird, because all of the Thomas Street remnants from the road project have been offered up once already for sale and RFP, right? I mean, after the street was in. A lot of that developed based on those activities.
And you can see that this lady, her letter is in there. She just wrote it November 6th.
Yep.
And she wanted to know when and how and what process they were going to follow. So we went back to the ordinance and it said it should, the request should go initially to the common council first, and then they can refer it to CISM and then on from there.
This, this did seem atypical, and the city is plowing the sidewalk there every time it snows. So the sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These properties, they're not on the list for the affordable housing that's going to go there, the single-family homes?
Heads are shaking, but maybe Director Brodeck.
I can clarify that. No, they are not. They are too small to be developed. When we got that request, it did go around to different departments to make sure that no one wanted them for anything like that. We looked at them and they are too small to develop.
Okay, and thank you. And, and I, when I first looked at this, and then before I looked at the packet, you know, I, I, I opposed the, the, the vote for the resolutions and ordinances tonight because of the fact that in the future, I do not want to promote bypassing due process. And so when I first looked at this item on the, you know, I thought, oh, here's an item that maybe should go in front of CISM first, but then when I looked at it, it says it will go back to CISM when voted on. So I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. I think we can vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. Last item, public comment and suggestions. It looks like we lost all of our public here. But I guess my suggestion is to have a lovely holiday and end of the new, and end of the year. I would take the last motion, motion to adjourn by Alder Watson, second by Alder Lukens. All in favor, can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right, we're adjourned. See you next year.